Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:07. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson, could you do the invocation, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Father God, we just give you the glory and the honor. We thank you for another opportunity to tell you just how great you are. Great is your faithfulness. We thank you that it is in you that we live and move and have our being. And Father God, we ask that for your presence, your spirit to be in this meeting tonight, we invite you and your wisdom. Father God, we ask that you would anoint us with your wisdom and wise counsel and your peace that surpasses all understanding. We thank you that your mercies are new every morning, and we just thank you for the citizens of Glen Arden, for the elected officials, the employees, and all our families. In Jesus' name we pray, amen and amen.
Amen. I will do the roll call. Councilmember Herring.
Here.
Councilman Hairston.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Oh, my goodness.
Councilwoman Fareed.
Here.
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Here.
Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
And Council President Curtis is here. We have a quorum. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any opposition? Then by unanimous consent, the agenda is hereby adopted. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the last regular meeting for this council. First on the agenda is the motion to adopt the minutes from March through May of 2025. Is there a motion to adopt these minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Any opposition to accepting these minutes? Hearing none. By unanimous consent, the minutes from March 2025 to May 2025 are hereby adopted. There are two pieces of legislation on the agenda tonight. We'll start off with R-64-2025, a resolution authorizing the city council to break for It was introduced by James A. Herring, councilmember. The public hearing was held on June the 10th. Date of introduction was June the 2nd, and it's being read today, June the 16th, 2025. A resolution authorizes the city council of Glen Arden, Maryland to break for recess. Whereas pursuant to Section 304A of the city charter, the council is authorized to cancel regularly scheduled meetings in the months of July and August, which have customarily been reserved for the city council recess. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session this 16th day of June 2025 as follows. The city council of Glen Arden does hereby cancel the regular meetings for the months of July and August 2025, during which time it will be in recess. And number two, special meetings shall be called by the clerk to the council upon the request of the mayor, council of the president, or majority of the members of the council. And number three, that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption. Is there a motion to bring this resolution to the floor for a vote?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Council President.
Yes, Councilwoman Guillaume.
Yes, my question is, given the new form of government, I know it says the mayor and the council, should it say mayor pro tempus as well, or no?
Yes, I think it's just, um, well, oh, no.
But maybe it says if a special meeting can be called by...
The mayor, and we could strike out president of the council.
Correct.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman Guillaume.
You're welcome.
Are there any other comments? Any objection to accepting the amended resolution? Hearing none by unanimous consent, R-64-2025 is hereby adopted. Lastly, is Resolution 66. That's 2025. A resolution to enter a rental agreement with Fantasy World Entertainment for a ride toward Glen Arden Day. Date of introduction was June the 10th. The public hearing was held on June the 10th, and it's being read today, June the 16th, 2025. Whereas the city council is promoting more community outreach, and whereas the city council would like to have a community event, and whereas the city council would like to celebrate Glen Arden Day to bring the community together for a day of celebration, and whereas the city council would like to have amusement rides at Glen Arden Day. And now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular, in its regular session, the 16th day of June 2025, that one, Fantasy World Entertainment will provide amusement rental per attached contract. Number two, the cost for services will not exceed $19,309.50. Number three, the funds will come from the budget line item 10-30-10-8647. And number four, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption. Is there a motion to bring this resolution to the floor for a vote?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Ferguson. Any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none by unanimous consent, R-66-2025 is hereby adopted. All right, last on the agenda, just put this...
Point of order, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
One thing that we need to handle while we're still sitting here is that currently our personnel manual do not give employees Juneteenth off.
Okay.
And I would like to make a motion that we give the employees June 19th off for Juneteenth.
I second that. Is there any discussion?
Uh, I have one thing. So are we going to rectify?
Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, Council President. So we'll need to rectify that by a resolution?
Um, we need to amend that by ordinance, personnel manual.
Okay, and we will put that into works, to have that done. All right, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on.
Um, as you call for the vote.
Ah, thank you. There's a first and a second, they will call for the vote. Councilman Herring.
Yes.
Councilman Hairston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fareed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson.
Yes.
And Council President Curtis, yes, and so it passes. Did I forget anything else?
I did want to ask one question since we have the staff here. I did want to ask one question about the tax notices that are going out. I don't think people are clear on that, that they'll be getting two tax notices this year. And I think our administration needs to explain that.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Councilman Herring. So what happened is that the Prince George's County Finance Department, they have set up their systems to print bills, which are the tax bills, in late May. It so happened that we decided on our tax rate after that date. So what will happen is, they will send out initial invoices or initial bills to the city of Glen Arden residents for the previous rate that was there. We have sent in the request to have, you know, renewed bill or edited bill, so they will be sending a replacement bills for the new rate that we have voted on. So those will be going out before the end of July.
Mr. President, yeah?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to figure out, because this happened last time, and I think bills went out, I think we had about two or three bills that went out last time, something like that?
Okay, so in 2021, we were using the constant yield rate, and that went out late as well. So, yes, we had a situation where we had to send notices to residents to let them know that the initial bill that will come from the county, they should ignore or disregard that bill because they will have a corrected bill coming in. So that had happened in 2021, and it has happened now because we reached the rates late.
I guess my question is, did we give them the .33?
The .33 was what they had recorded in May 15th.
But I guess I'm trying to figure out why would they, how did they pick up .33 if we didn't give it to them? And I guess my concern is this, is that if I had known that the bills were already printed for the tax increase at .33, I mean for the tax rate at .33, I never would have voted for the increase because it's confusing for people. Some people who get that first tax bill are going to pay that bill and not even really think about the second bill that comes in, but they're going to have a balance due because the rate has gone up. So I just think it's going to be confusing all the way around when it comes down to paying this year's taxes. So I just think there's an issue there with some type of communication, and if the bills had gone out, we should have known that the bills were already printed and were going out at the .33 rate prior to voting for the increase. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Are there any other comments related to business before we go to the next item? Okay. Council clerk, could you go and give the proclamation from the governor? We want to read it before we close out. Okay. While we wait, I did want to open the floor for any closing remarks from this sitting elected body. If you have any, please let me know, and if you could hold it to two to three minutes, that'd be great. I see mayor saying first, and if we could hold it to two to three minutes, that'd be great, and then we can adjourn, or we can read the proclamation from the governor, and we'll be able to adjourn. Mayor Cross.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. And as we close out this elected year grouping, it has been just an honor and just a definite honor to serve in the capacity in which we've had the opportunity as mayor of this great city of Glen Arden since 2021. We've moved about 50 legislative bills through the governor's signature bipartisan signed by Annapolis's House of Delegates and the Senate team. It's been an awesome journey alongside the county council and the county executive who have also led in the way of improving our school youth and services, but also building a stronger youth department when it comes down to Maryland National Capital Parks and planning. And so for all of the citizens who have come out and had the opportunity to support or have benefited from these over 87 programs a year, it's been not only just a joy to serve, but just an opportunity for us to show that Glen Arden is on the move, and Glen Arden has stabilized itself as a community herald when it comes down to moving things for youth, seniors, veterans, and as well as our families and our at need and at risk communities. And so this is a staple that we made to move missions forward, which has been my motto. One of the key things that we also are now still fighting with is the Eric's ID law and the ideology that will be put on the endatia, that will be put on the license. I'm honored to state that those with hidden disabilities will be protected and all law enforcement across the state of Maryland will be trained. It is very important, however, that we steady the course when it comes down to much more items surrounding our hidden disability and our at risk communities, because as you know, much of that funding got cut in this particular year grouping. So FY26 will be a challenge for many of our community members who have special needs particularly. But with that, I just want to say thank you all so much for allowing me to have this opportunity to serve and to continue to be able to serve as your incoming city councilwoman. It will be not only a joy, but an honor to continue on this journey of moving the mission forward. So thank you so much for all you do for Glen Arden and all the work that you have continued to support relative to moving the mission forward. Thank you. Mayor Kishine Cross, out.
Thank you. Are there any other closing remarks by, oh, Councilwoman Fareed?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to the citizens. Serving as your council member has been one of the greatest honors of my life. When I stepped into this role, I did so with a heart for service and a deep commitment to our children, our community's health, and making government work better for everyone. Over the past few years, we've planted seeds I know will continue to grow, whether it was advocating for our new park, launching tutoring and uniform support programs, or championing traffic, safety, and equitable city services. I've worked to bring both compassion and accountability to the table, sometimes in challenging circumstances, but always with the goal of building a Glen Arden that works for all of us. As I close this chapter, I remain committed to civic engagement and empowering the next generation of leaders. I'm stepping aside from the dais, but not from the work. My service will simply take on a new shape. To my fellow residents, thank you for trusting me, challenging me, and allowing me to lead. To those who will carry the torch forward, thank you, and stay bold, stay principled, and never lose sight of who we serve. Thank you, Glen Arden. It's been an honor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Is there anyone else? Do you want to go? Councilwoman Guillaume.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to know that literally what I just did right now was exactly what I did four years ago. And what I also said four years ago was, I may not get it right, but I will always try to do right. And what I also said was, in English and Spanish and in Haitian Creole, that this is Caribbean Heritage Week. And four years ago, I made history as being the first Afro-Caribbean, Afro-Latin, Haitian-American to win office in Glen Arden. And while I still am the only, I'm happy to see so many faces of so many beautiful people who I now consider friends and family and who have brought me in. I have become friends with people who I didn't expect to become friends with, not because I was just anti-them, but just because we just didn't know each other. But what we did end up knowing, the commonality, well, what we did end up having is the commonality of love for this beautiful city that I call home. The fact that I can sit back and reminisce about how we came and four years ago had to wear masks, I'm still wearing a mask because I'm under the weather, we had to wear masks, and to know that so many people were struggling, and we were able to pass legislation that helped those people, especially those people who are not like us, you know, actually be able to provide for their families. That's what I go and I think about when I think about my time here. I think about the legislations that have impacted not just everyone on the city side, but also personally on my side, as I think about the expungement fair and how my colleagues actually thought about people besides themselves. I think about the opportunities that we have had to work with citizens and ourselves behind the scenes, in the middle of the night, and sometimes early in the morning, where there are no photo ops, but we are still trying to make a difference. And I think about the veterans, the wonderful veterans of this city who have gone on to glory, but their family and legacy still live on. So I thank you, Glen Arden, and I thank you for the families, the children, I thank you for the spirited conversations, and I will say this, that I never had any intentions of running for office, never, ever, ever. I, like many citizens, would come to meetings or attend meetings, and I would say, I don't like what this is, or I don't know if I agree with that. But the difference that I would say is, I ran because I wanted to be part of a solution, not to just continue to talk about the problem. So I will still be here, and I will offer constructive advice and criticism when necessary, but I will also commend my colleagues, who while I will not, while I will no longer have councilmember in front of my name, I will still forever carry this pin on me. So thank you, Glen Arden, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Guillaume. Councilwoman Jones? No? Okay. Councilman Hairston? No? Hey, council.
Yes, I just would like to thank my two colleagues who chose not to run, which is probably what I should have did, but it's, I'm telling you, I really appreciate the hard work and them coming out here, taking on this task, because it's a major, major job. And people think that, you know, they see us three times a month, but we work almost 24/7. You know, we're grassroots. We are always, you know, I'd be out cutting my grass, people would stop me, it takes me four hours to cut my grass, because I've got to stop and talk to citizens who have problems, and we address those problems. And we bring new ideas and new programs to the floor, and that's what these two councilmembers did with this, in this term. We've had more programming in this term than we've ever had before in the city of Glen Arden, and it was to benefit the children, it was to benefit the youth, it was to benefit the older, the seniors, and everyone else. So again, I appreciate your serving on this council. Thank you for your service, and I look forward to your compliments, not your critiques, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Vice President Ferguson.
Good evening. Make mine really quick. I love Glen Arden. I am Glen Arden. So I've been here all my life, and I just want to say that it has been a pleasure serving the citizens of Glen Arden, the entire Glen Arden, all wards. And like my colleague said, we have done, accomplished a lot in this session, and it was a pleasure to be a blessing to a lot of the families, providing different programs to support their families. The other thing I wanted to do was to thank those who allowed me to be reelected. I will continue to work hard. Pretty much sometimes it seems like I'm 24/7, because if I get a call at 6, I get a call at 5:50, and 8:00 a.m. in the morning and at night, I answer. If someone looks, if I don't know, I will check on it and get back to them. So while it wasn't my intention to ever serve, I take pleasure in doing so. And I just want to thank you again for reelecting me, and I will work hard in this term as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. Oh, we'll do, oh, I'll say a few words. The time, okay. Can you hear me now?
Now.
Okay, good. Mr. Gray, can you turn my mic up, please? All of them. Well, right now, can you turn my mic up, please, little people? And then you have to turn yours off. Okay, all right, but you can hear me now, right?
I have the downstairs voice.
All right. Let me say, I mean, these four years seems like it's flown by. It has, for as much work as we have done and the things that we've accomplished, it seems like it's flown by. And I just want to say thank you to everyone up here. I think we, I mean, we definitely disagreed on some things, but we've worked well together to accomplish a lot. The Intergenerational Poverty Fund, helping people through the pandemic, helping tutor our kids in the city. Glen Arden Day, that's everyone, of the Glen Arden Days has been, you know, spectacular. It's gotten better and better every year. The expungement fairs, where we have been able to help so many people. You know, we have, we have come together in times of need to really serve our community and beyond, so I appreciate working with each and every one of you. Being council president for the past four years has been a challenge in trying to, you know, make sure we get everything done and control these meetings, but I wouldn't have it any other way, and I appreciate everyone up here. I do want to give special recognition to two people that I started with, Councilwoman Fareed and Councilwoman Guillaume. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you guys. I appreciate meeting you guys. I think we met at the tennis courts or something like that, and we decided to just, just jump in and serve the community in which we live. And, you know, I see your heart and everything that you've done over the past four years, everything that you've tried to do, and it's unquestioned, just the passion and the love you have for the city. And I appreciate you just being an example of that. So I'm going to miss you guys on the council, but I know that you will give us your, our praises and our critiques for all the late night calls, so thank you. And for, I'm gonna say my ride or die vice president, who has been on the phone with me until 1:00 in the morning, either praising me or critiquing me. I could not have done this without you as well. I appreciate you praying for me more than anything, and just, just all that we've done to manage these meetings together, it's just, words can't describe how helpful and a blessing you've been to me. So, thank you. No crying. So with that, I think we will...
Well, no, let me say something, because I didn't know everybody was going to talk. Like, I was used to us talking on the other side, because I got reelected again, so I just want to say thank y'all for reelecting me again. I love this city, I enjoy serving with everybody up here. I feel like this the last day of school, everybody talking like we graduating, but we threw chicken at each other, we had arguments, we had fights, but we family. I ran on peace, love, and unity. I'm gonna continue to bring peace, love, and unity to the community, and I appreciate all y'all's support for everybody to show up to the meetings, to the community days, because really, without y'all, we nothing. So, you know, we, I just appreciate all the love and the support from the citizens and definitely from my colleagues up here, because, I mean, we one city, we Glen Arden, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, you'll have an opportunity when you get sworn in. Okay, all right, so with that, we'll have one more item, and then we'll break for, to introduce the newly elected council members. So with that, Councilwoman Guillaume, do you want to read?
Sure. This is the last time I'll say, I'll say, "Sure, Council President." So Glen Arden is a special place, as we all know, and we obviously wouldn't be where we are right now if it wasn't for this beautiful city. And one of the things about this beautiful city is a beautiful gem that's up the street, which is the Glen Arden Veterans Memorial. I see the head of the Glen Arden Veterans Memorial Committee in the audience, and I just love her dearly, and I'm happy to see her here healthy. One of the beautiful things about this memorial is it continues to be recognized, and one of the last things, or the last thing that I decided to do along with my colleagues, the wonderful council vice president, the last time I'll be calling her that, council vice president Angela Ferguson. Vice President Angela Ferguson, and Council Member Anthony, James Anthony Herring, excuse me, is we honored the 10-year anniversary of the Veterans Memorial, it being erected in this beautiful city. One of the invited guests saw fit to present a proclamation to the city of Glenn Arden because of this beautiful memorial. And while they are not here this evening, and this celebration was on May 3rd, we didn't have an opportunity to read it back then, but we see it as a must for this to be my very last act as a council member of this particular slate, to read the proclamation from the Governor Wesley Moore. "The State of Maryland, Governor of the State of Maryland to Glenn Arden Veterans Memorial 10th Anniversary. Greetings. Be it, be it known, because of your demonstration of high integrity and ability, meriting our great trust and respect, we are most pleased to award you the Governor's Citation." I need y'all to clap. This is Glenn Arden, y'all. "We are most pleased to award you the Governor's Citation in appreciation of your outstanding services to the citizens of this state, given this 3rd of May by, and it's signed, Governor Wes Moore and Anana Miller, who is the Lieutenant Governor." So it's right here. Here you go, Council President.
Thank you. That'll be the next one. All right, and the other comments? All right, well, this will be the last time, so with that, closing out this four-year legislative body, the time is 6:39, and this meeting is now adjourned.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for your love, your mercy, and your grace. We thank you for this special day. We thank you for this day of, for the Glenn Arden government and the job that they have before them. We pray tonight that you will be with each and every one of them, and you will be with the community, and that everything will go according to your will and your way. We thank you, God, for good counties, good towns, and good people, and we pray that your Spirit will maintain all of those throughout the year. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Madam Clerk, you want to come here? And when the elected officials come in, whoever's going to hold your Bible can come with you and just speak into the mic. And the first one is Ms. Kashina Cross.
And good evening, as we would say in court. For the record, my name is Mahasan El Amin. I am your elected clerk for the Circuit Court for Prince George's County. It's an honor to be here, and I can't wait to swear in all seven council members. All right, so you have your own Bible? No. Okay, we're gonna switch places, though. You're gonna stand in the middle. Come a little bit over here. I'm gonna try and get the mic. So you have to speak, right hand, left hand of the Bible, raise your right hand. Do you want to swear or affirm?
I swear.
Okay, ready? I?
I.
State your name.
Dr. Kashina Awatha Cross.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Support the Charter and laws?
Support the Charter and laws.
Of the city of Glenn Arden.
Of the city of Glenn Arden.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
And that I will execute the office of?
And that I will execute the office of?
Councilmember for the city of Glenn Arden.
Councilmember for the city of Glenn Arden.
In Prince George's County.
In Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
And the Charter of this town.
And the Charter of this city.
Congratulations.
All right, I'll say "town" if you want me to.
I need your signature.
God bless.
Mr. Maurice Harrison?
All right. Bible, Constitution.
Look, I'm...
I had to do the same thing.
For real?
Yeah, Bible, Constitution.
Uh-huh, Bible.
Okay, ready? Yeah, get a little bit closer, sweetie. He won't bite that comment. Do you want to swear or affirm?
Swear.
Okay. I?
I.
State your name.
Maurice Harrison.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Support the Charter and laws of the city of Glenn Arden.
Support the charters and laws of the city of Glenn Arden.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
And execute the office of?
And execute the office of?
Councilmember for the city of Glenn Arden.
Councilmember for the city of Glenn Arden.
In Prince George's County.
In Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
And according to the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Charter of this city.
And the Charter of this city.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I ain't know if I was supposed to go up on the words for two of them.
Good job.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, I need your signature. You're not legit.
You don't need blood.
Mr. James Herring?
Swear.
Okay. All right, left hand, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I?
I.
State your name.
James Herring.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Support the Charter and laws of the city of Glenn Arden.
Support the Charter and laws of the city of Glenn Arden.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
And execute the office of?
And execute the office of?
Councilmember for the city of Glenn Arden.
Councilmember for the city of Glenn Arden.
In Prince George's County.
In Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Charter of this city.
And the Charter of this city.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Robin Jones?
I am asking Chief Bryant to stand in for me, as I am my mother's being... ...recovered and reenjoyed home tonight by my family.
Right hand? Left hand? Would you want to... She's not gonna bite your tongue. Not today. Do you want to swear or affirm?
Pardon?
Swear or affirm?
Swear.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I?
I.
State your name.
Robin Jones.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Support the Charter and laws of the city of Glenn Arden.
And support the Charter and laws of the city of Glenn Arden.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of?
Execute the office of?
Councilmember for the city of Glenn Arden.
Councilmember of the city of Glenn Arden.
And Prince George's County.
And Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Charter of this city.
And the Charter of this city.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Don Juan Williams?
Mr. Isaac Trout, my political and mentor, cap office side, made me the man who I am today.
Bible, Constitution? Okay, okay, you're gonna get a little closer? I thought that was a Bible. Okay, you ready? Raise your right hand, and the microphone will pick up, so you want to... Do you want to swear or affirm?
Swear.
Okay. I?
I.
State your name.
Don Juan Lee Williams.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And I will support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Support the Charter and laws of the city of Glenn Arden.
And I will?
Support the Charter and laws?
Support the charters and laws.
Of the city of Glenn Arden.
Of the city of Glenn Arden.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
And execute the office of?
And execute the office of?
Councilmember for the city of Glenn Arden.
Councilmember for the city of Glenn Arden.
And Prince George's County.
And Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Charter of this city.
And the Charter of this city.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Whoop, are those your keys?
No.
Ms. Angela Ferguson?
This is my lovely goddaughter, Destiny Walker. Destiny Nicole Walker.
All right, you ready? Raise your right hand, do you want to swear or affirm?
I do want to swear.
Okay. I?
I.
State your name.
Angela Denise Ferguson.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Support the Charter and laws of the city of Glenn Arden.
Support the Charter and laws of the city of Glenn Arden.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
And execute the office of?
And execute the office of?
Councilmember for the city of Glenn Arden.
Councilmember of the city of Glenn Arden.
And Prince George's County.
And Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Charter of this city.
And the Charter of this city.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Derek Curtis II.
Well, the, the guy that made me the, the man I am today is my uncle and pastor, Don Curtis. This little guy is my son, Carson, who's molded me to be the, along with Cassidy, the, the man that I am now with two kids. And I don't watch, y'all.
He must have had a good Father's Day then.
Yeah, had a good Father's Day.
Okay. Do you want to swear or affirm?
I swear.
Okay. Left hand, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I?
I.
State your name.
Derek Dion Curtis II.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Support the Charter and laws of the city of Glenn Arden.
Support the Charter and laws of the city of Glenn Arden.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
And execute the office of?
And execute the office of?
Councilmember for the city of Glenn Arden.
Councilmember for the city of Glenn Arden.
And Prince George's County.
And Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Charter of this city.
And the Charter of this city.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right. I would like to officially call this meeting to order as the new elected body of the city of Glenn Arden. So we will not be before you long, so we're going to follow the regular protocol of our meeting, and we'll have invocation by, well, Ms. Angela Ferguson, Councilwoman Angela Ferguson, at this point.
Good evening. Father God, we just thank you. We give you the glory and the honor and the praise. We thank you for your loving kindness, your goodness and your mercy. Great is your faithfulness towards us all. And Father, we invite you in your spirit into this, into this meeting. We ask that you will bless us, oh God, with wisdom and peace, the peace that's passed us all understanding. We ask that you will bless us with wise counsel and, and discipline, Father God, in the name of Jesus. Father, I just ask that you bless everyone that is here in this, in this building right now, in the name of Jesus. Bless the citizens of Glenn Arden. Bless all who's associated with the city of Glenn Arden, our citizens, and our employees, and our families. In Jesus' name I pray, amen and amen.
Amen. And I am doing double duty tonight, because our lovely council clerk voice is gone, so that's why you see me introducing people and doing some other things. But so, we'll go with the roll call, our first roll call. Oh, wow. Councilmember Herring?
Here.
Councilmember Harrison?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Cross?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Here.
And Councilmember Curtis is here. So we have a quorum. We do not have minutes. So is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none by unanimous consent. The agenda is hereby adopted. I'm reading the wrong one, that's why. Okay. The only thing on today's agenda, the legislations are 67, R68, and ordinance 10. So we'll start off, in our new form of government, it says that the, from the council, the mayor and mayor pro temp will be selected from the council. For those who kind of don't understand how this works, in the same way that the House of Representatives are elected, and then they get together and vote who the Speaker of the House is, that's pretty much the same government we, we have. We all were elected at large for city council members, and we had an organizational meeting last week to determine who will be the mayor and the mayor pro temp. So with that, we'll officially adopt who the mayor will be, and we'll start off with the, start off with the mayor. Resolution R67, 2025, introduced by the council, a resolution to select the mayor. Whereas the Glenn Arden City Charter, Section 305, may... Whereas the Glen Arden City Charter, Section 305, mayor and mayor pro temp calls for a mayor to be selected from the council members during the organizational meeting. And whereas the mayor shall preside over all meetings of the council, may participate in all discussions, shall have a vote on all matters before the council, shall have all rights, duties, and obligations of a council member. And whereas the mayor shall exercise such other powers and perform such other duties as are or may be conferred or and imposed upon the mayor by the charter and ordinances of the city. And whereas the mayor shall be recognized as the head of the city government for all ceremonial purposes by the courts for serving civil purposes and by the governor for the purpose of military law. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of Glen Arden sitting in regular session the 16th day of June 2025, that city council member Derek Curtis II is hereby designated and approved as the mayor of the city of Glen Arden for a period of four years from the effective date of said resolution. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So.
Move by Councilmember Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jones. And any discussion? And we'll do a voice, oh, voice vote, of course. Councilmember Herring.
Yes.
Councilmember Hairston.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Cross.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
And I am a yes. And my title changes from council member to mayor.
Congratulations.
Next is Resolution 68 dash 2025, a resolution to select the mayor pro temp. It is introduced by the council. Whereas the Glen Arden City Charter, Section 305, mayor pro temp calls for the mayor pro temp to be selected from the council members during the organizational meeting. And whereas the mayor pro temp shall execute the duties of the mayor in absence of the mayor. And whereas the mayor pro temp shall act as mayor, perform all the duties of the mayor for the unexpired term of the mayor or during the continuance of the absence or disability. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Glen Arden sitting in regular session the 16th day of June 20, of June 2025, that city council member Angela D. Ferguson is hereby designated and approved as the mayor pro temp of the city of Glen Arden for a period of four years from the effective date of said resolution. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll go to a voice vote. Councilmember Herring.
Yes.
Councilmember Hairston.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Cross.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
And Mayor Curtis is a yes. And Ms. Ferguson's title changed from council member to mayor pro temp.
I don't mean to interrupt the meeting, but I mean call them to. Call them first.
All right. Last item on the agenda is ordinance 10 dash 2025, an emergency ordinance to amend ordinance 04 2025, an ordinance to regulate the parking of work vehicles and prohibit the parking of commercial vehicles in residential and public areas to support community business growth while preserving traffic flow and neighborhood quality of life. Councilmember Herring.
Yes. The current ordinance that's in place actually do not allow citizens to park their personal pickup trucks or their personal vans in, on the, on the city streets. This ordinance will basically correct that situation right now. And I think if you have a personal pickup, you know, a lot of people use that as their family vehicles right now. So I think we need, I would like to have that amended to take that personal, the personal use section of the ordinance out. Again, this is a new session. I tried to bring it last session with the last council. Unfortunately, I couldn't do it because it was brought up twice. So I'm trying to bring it in this new session with this new council and move it forward. And basically, allowing citizens the right to park on the street that they paid for. So that's where we are with this.
Okay. Well, is there a motion to?
And so I make a motion that we bring this to the floor as an emergency ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
She has a point of order.
Okay, what is your point of order? Point of order for the record, this legislation needs to be modified considering the approved by section is out of date. Thank you.
Well, first, we'll get to that in a second. This part is just to determine it as an emergency and then we'll vote on that part.
I can't hear you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? So it was, so we'll go ahead and vote. The motion came from Councilmember Herring. It was seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson. And we'll vote now. Councilmember Herring.
Yes.
Councilmember Hairston.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Abstain.
Councilmember Cross.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson.
Yes.
And I am a yes. So this is designated as an emergency. And now would you, is there a motion to bring this to the floor for a vote?
So move, Mr. President. I mean, Mr. Mayor. I got to get used to four years of Mr. President. If you want to read it for the 15th time, you can. I think you may just want to read the title. I mean, we've read this.
Yeah, we've read it. Is there a second? Yeah, so there was a motion to bring this to the floor for a vote by Councilmember Herring. I just need a second.
A second.
All right. Any discussion? Councilmember Cross.
Just to state a discussion, as a point of order, we need to modify the approved by section to make sure it properly reflects the current council. Thank you.
We'll do so. Is there any other discussion? Okay. With that, we'll move forward with the vote to accept ordinance 10 dash 2025, an ordinance to amend ordinance 0, I meant 0, 04 2025, an ordinance to regulate the parking of work vehicles and prohibit the parking of commercial vehicles in residential and public areas to support community business growth while preserving traffic flow and neighborhood quality of life. Councilmember Herring.
Yes.
Councilmember Hairston.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Abstain.
Councilmember Cross.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson.
Yes.
And I am an abstain. Okay. With that, we'll just open the floor for any opening remarks and then we'll adjourn. From, for. Yeah, it passed, yes. So I'll open the floor to any opening remarks from the newly elected council members. Mayor Cross, if you can keep it to two to three minutes, so we keep moving, that'd be great. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity for everyone that came out tonight. We just want to say thank you again for your witness and also for all those citizens that did come out and thought in our robbery to elect and to vote for those that will serve in the next four years. This is a tough year to have. This is a time where we're going to need to come together as a community, as a family, to actually combat a lot of the deficit and a lot of the lack that we already see happening across this nation. So it is an honor to again serve on this capacity now as a legislator. It has been just a journey of enjoyment and pleasure as we have moved the mission forward, which you know has been my motto for four years and maintains itself as we are looking at not only addressing the continual lack, if you will, when it comes down to our pay, when it comes down to our senior benefits, when it comes down to our youth services. And that's going to be a key one for us to watch because we are fighting for that second and third generation. Without the support of this community, what's not going to happen, as you know, we have a Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, which is the Glen Arden Community Center. We're going to be calling on you to help in that regard to actually build not only a stronger set for our youth, but also for our families. And as we look at our veterans, it was an honor to see earlier the acknowledgement from the governor for our veterans, but there's going to be more on the forefront because they're also a very important part of this community as it pertains to safety and security. So it is an honor to serve and thank you so much to the administration, to the police chief, and all of those that have represented, have served this community so well, from the clerks to all of the members that you will within our CIO, CFO as well. So we're very excited about this opportunity, look forward to another four years of greater as we look at moving this city on the move further. So thank you again. It has been an honor to again sit on this board and now I look forward to a new dimension. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams.
They're speaking to Mike.
Hello. All right, thank you, everyone. I appreciate everyone who came out here tonight, especially my fraternity brothers. Would y'all please stand that came out here because we do a whole lot in this community, in this city. And Ms. Harshaw, can you stand, friends came our way from Atlanta. So it's a blessing. This is my fifth term as a city councilman and along with three terms as a mayor. So I appreciate this city. I love this city. Grew up in this city and hopefully for the next four years and my last four years. The last four years, this is it. We do get some things done that was speed bumps. People have been calling me about this piece of legislation and speed bumps. So hopefully we can get some priority things from people and myself done within the next few years. I appreciate and we keep it short and sweet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mayor Curtis. I appreciate that. To all of the citizens of the city of Glen Arden, I appreciate the opportunity and the honor to serve you once again. As most of you know, I've been in the city of Glen Arden since 1964. I love this city. I want to see it move forward. I want to see it prosper. And I want to see all of our citizens also prosper. If you need me, I am available at any time. You can reach out to the council clerk or if you don't have my card or number, you can reach out to the council clerk and give me a call and I will listen to your, whatever it is issue that you have. I also want to give out a thanks to our police department. Thank you, Chief Bryant, for, for standing in for me this evening. I appreciate that from the bottom of my heart. Thank you, Captain Robinson, and all of the members of the Glen Arden Police Department for what you do. Thank you so much. I appreciate your service. Just hang in there. Thank you, city of Glen Arden.
Councilmember Hairston. If you would like to say anything.
So I spoke at the six o'clock. So whoever ain't make it to church at six o'clock, I'm going to say it again. So thank y'all for electing me and putting me in office again. It's an honor. It's a privilege. It's my pleasure to serve the community. And again, I'm all about unity in the community. I'm going to keep bringing great ideas. I'm going to keep it electrifying. And you know, I'm glad to serve with the new council and huge shout out to the old council and all the administration. Y'all did y'all thing and hit today too with all this blue. So give y'allself a round of applause. Y'all over there looking like commentators. I told them they look like commentators on the side. But shout out to y'all. Thanks for all y'all hard work. Thank you.
Councilmember Herring.
Yeah. Let me use your mic because he turned my down. I have to do my downstairs voice. They don't want me to do the downstairs voice. Yeah, all right, there we go. All right. I don't know what's going on with this mic and stuff. Downstairs voice you want like, but I'd just like to thank all the citizens that voted me into office again. This is my ninth term. At the end of this. At the end of this term, it'll be 24 years on the council and I'm telling you, this is my last term. I mean, it's been, it's been one wild rodeo. And I've been on that bull and been bucked and tossed and turned and everything else. But I do it for the love of the city and the love of the community. I love the people here, you know. I always say that, you know, growing up in the 60s, you know, we faced a lot of discrimination and racism and everything else. But in Glen Arden, they, we were in the fishbowl. I didn't know that existed because the elders in this community made sure that we were protected and we were protected from that. So again, I feel it's my obligation to the citizens, the seniors, the elders in this community to try to make sure that you have a quality life in your golden years. So that's what I've always tried to do and that's what I'll always try to do for these next four years. And also make it a great community for people coming in and raising their children. Glen Arden has always been a lovely place. It's been an exceptional place. And like I said, it's like a, you know, a place that a lot of people don't believe and don't understand that African American community can be so successful and be such a great place to live in. So again, I appreciate everybody for voting me into office. I appreciate everybody for, you know, acknowledging the work that we do as a council because we do do a lot of work. And like I say, it's some back and forth and I know y'all have seen the meetings, y'all have seen me. So I'm going to try to do better, but hey, no guarantees. That's me. So again, thanks again. Thanks for everything.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson.
I don't like, I don't like public talking. However, I want to thank everyone for coming. It's on. I said I do not like public speaking. However, thank you all for coming out and supporting this swearing in and your, and thank you for your votes. I also want to thank our administration and especially Michelle Cheeks for getting the decorative, decorating this. Michelle. She's a phenomenal employee and she's decorated all this. And I also want with. And Karen Schultz and just administration. And this is my third term. I never thought I would be, I say I'm a servant, not a politician. So this is an assignment for me. So thank you. And I've been in Glen Arden since 1959, all my life. And so I do want to acknowledge some of my guests, Pastor William Covington. Great cathedral. He's standing up. My goddaughter, Destiny Nicole Walker. My sister, this is a sister in Christ, mother, I call her Deb, Mother Deborah Green. My other sister, some of you might have seen her. This is elder, Brenda, Brenda Malloy, Elder Brenda Malloy. She's a Glen Arner. She lives in Ward 3. And so I just want to let you know that I'm here to work for you, all the citizens. And I get, like I said, I get calls. I will, you give me an assignment, it will be fulfilled. And thank you for your trust.
Good evening, everyone. I want to, well, I first thank God for being here. This is my second term. And it was, it was tricky because as, you know, at least the council members know that we had a very condensed time to campaign. And then I got busy with work. So literally I only campaigned for two weeks. And, you know, and just praying to God and just having a heart to serve the city and to come out with the second most votes proved that, you know, this is what God has for me in this season. To be able to do that in two weeks, that's some hot days. And so I want to, yeah, just want to thank God for allowing me to be here. I think as we just continue to grow as people and continue to just push forward, I think it's important for all of us to examine our own lives and see what we can do to help our communities. Because we. to help our communities, uh, because, um, we are in a time now where people are standing by the wayside and just looking instead of being part of the fight. Um, and so hopefully, as a young man, I can inspire other young men to, um, just take on that role. It's, it's a lot, it's, it's sacrifice, have a full-time job, uh, it's sacrifice and have a, a beautiful family. Um, and, but it's needed. Uh, we can't leave it for the next person or just say that, oh, uh, not hold our current elected officials accountable. My, my hope is that for citizens of Glen Arden that you hold all of us accountable, don't just take our word for it. Know what we're doing, um, and hold us accountable every single day, cause we serve you. Uh, quickly, I just wanna say that a man who finds a wife finds a good thing, so I wanna recognize my wife, who holds it down and, and supports me, cause I notice a lot on her as well, uh, and my two children, Cassidy and Carson. Uh, and as I said before, I would never have been here if it wasn't for my uncle, uh, who's been like my father my entire life. Uh, and so, um, just love you, love all that you poured in to me and, and just thank you for stepping up, uh, when I didn't have anybody, so I appreciate that. Uh, and I just want, everybody over there is like family, so if everybody over there could stand up who came to support me. So, so this is my village, so I appreciate each and every one of you guys, thank you. All right, the last thing is, um, I will hand this out to each one, it says the same thing, so I'll just read one of them. Um, this is from, thank you, this is from, uh, Councilwoman Jolene Ivy's office in this certificate to recognize, uh, each one of us from Prince George's County Council. Official citation, be it hereby known to all that sincerest congratulations are extended to Robin Jones, uh, Councilwoman Cross, Councilmember Williams, Councilwoman Ha- Councilman Hairston, sorry, Councilman Harry, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, and Mayor Curtis, being elected and sworn in, uh, as at-large council members for the city of Glen Arden, presented the sixteenth day of June twenty twenty-five, uh, signed by Jolene Ivy. And so each of you will get one of these. Sorry? Yes.
Sorry, Council President, I know they didn't want to be called out, but I'm gonna have to do it anyhow. Mr. Mario Cross is in the back, that's my husband, stand up, I know he didn't want to be. Dr. Bruno, stand up with all our team here, uh, thank you so much, stand up. I just wanna make sure that you all know that those guys are just a beautiful set of folks and, um, I know I didn't want any acknowledgements tonight, but I just couldn't sit here and just let you stay there. You have an important place and you have played not only in my life, but in moving the mission forward, so I thank you so much, so, thank you.
Mayor, um, can I acknowledge some other people?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank, um, Nicole Mensey, Destiny Walker, Dynasty Mensey, and Keith Walker. Thank you. That, um, Desiree just came from her graduation.
All right. And I also wanted to acknowledge Senator Benton who is here, so thank you, Senator Benton, for coming. All right, uh, so with that, uh, we're about to adjourn, but if you wanna stay around, uh, there's some refreshments here. I know some people wanna hurry up and leave, you know, go see the game, but, oh, I, I'm sorry, we would not be here, thank you for reminding me, if it wasn't for our Board of Elections. So everyone, can you please stand if you participated? Thank, thank you for your service. So, okay, all right, one more shout out.
And I'm sorry, Lieutenant Richardson, charge my head, not my heart, I acknowledge you also as a police, as a part of the police staff.
Yes.
Hierarchy, management staff, thank you.
We appreciate all that our officers do.
Don't adjourn, let me, let me do some shout outs real quick, let me, somebody got the DJ scratch too, let me scratch it up right quick. Cause first I wanna acknowledge everybody, I wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. Also wanna acknowledge Delencia Hairston, Morgan Hairston, Emil Hairston, Amir Battle, um, Lo Al Battle, and, um, Ari Eldo in the back that came to support me, as well as Ms. Wilson, Smallwood, um, Yvette, Yvonne, I'm sorry, I called you Yvette, I'm sorry, you gave me the face too, you was about to tell me, uh, Ms. Robin Berry Wells, um, Kat Guillam, Joyce Butler, and Erica Fareed, thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to echo, we appreciate all that our officers do for the city, appreciate your hard work. You often don't get acknowledged, you know, you hear a lot of criticism, but thank you for, uh, your selfless service to the city and thank you for the gentleman who, as Councilman Hairston said, looked like the analysts down here, but they, this is, uh, Mr. Charles Simpson is our city manager, stand up. Um, Mr. Brian Wood is our assistant city manager, stand up, Mr. Wood. And Mr. Stewart is our treasurer. And Mo- where's, is Monet here? Monet is right there. Monet is our, uh, communications manager. As I said, um, unfortunately she can't talk, but, uh, council clerk, uh, Ms. Veronica Wood. And who? And thank you for, uh, the catering services, Cole Catering Service. And so what I'll do is I'll have, um, um, not Vice President, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, um, well, I'll adjourn first and then I'll say a prayer for, we'll say a prayer for the food. Oh, I'm sorry, and I don't know how I forgot this, but the lovely Ms. Elaine Carter, former Mayor Elaine Carter of the city of Glen Arden, thank you for all that you have done. And I, I don't think I've missed anyone. If I have, please, charge my head, not my heart. Um, all right, yeah, the, they've already been announced, yes. Oh, so, to close out, our, our first meeting, the time is seven fifty-three, this meeting is now adjourned. If, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson can say the grace for the food and then you can stay behind for food or take pictures, leave if you want to, but this is the end of the meeting, so Vice President, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Cur- I mean, Ferguson.
You'll get used to it. Bless this food that we're about to receive, may it be nourished into our body, bless the hands that prepare it, and in Jesus's name we pray, amen and amen.
Amen.